Good evening, the time is seven. Let me welcome you to the regular Town Council Meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, October 28th. The first item on the agenda is in location. So I'm going to invite our special guest Pastor Billy Kelly of Tripp Hatred.
Pleasant to be here, Stephen. And I thank you, Stephen, for working for our church so well. I'm really pleased with all the dealings we have with the city. And it's been wonderful. I want to thank all of you for that. Let's go to the Lord in the prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight, Lord, I want to pray for them tornado people lost their homes, Lord, tonight, the fires out in California, Lord, the shootings, Lord. A lot of things happening in our lives, Lord, and we don't understand, Lord. But we come tonight, Lord, and we pray for righteousness tonight, Lord. We pray for the City Council and all the people here tonight, Lord, that you'd give them wisdom and knowledge, Lord, and they'd make the right decisions, Lord, tonight. And, Lord, as we come, Lord, we thank you for the workers working on these roads out here, Lord, the ones pushing the shovels, the tractors, the trucks. And, Lord, we ask you to keep them safe as they build our roads, Lord, and our city grows, Lord, every day, Lord, and people are moving in, Lord. And, Lord, it's wonderful, Lord. And we just ask you, Lord, tonight, Lord, that you just give us that peace that passes all understanding, and, Lord, that you just be with us tonight and lead and guide us, Lord. And, Lord, as I come tonight, I ask you, Lord, to bless these people tonight. In Jesus' name I pray.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I like your statement. I got a 95-year-old dad, I gotta put him to bed. Put him to bed every night.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all so much.
Please join me, Stephen, for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, Mr. Jackson. Good evening, once again, the time is 7:02, so I'm going to call to order the regular Town Council Meeting of Town of Sunnyvale. For the record, our council members, except Mr. Clark, is present. With the sixth of the seven council members present, we have called. Council, we have several items on the agenda. Item D is the time for announcements, so pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551 or 415, council and staff may report on different items. So I'm going to open up the time for council announcements. Council, are there any announcements?
I have. This is the week for the library fundraiser. Friends of the Sunnyvale Public Library will host the fundraiser Saturday evening, November the 2nd, 7:00 PM, at the Sunnyvale High School Performing Arts Auditorium, for the benefit of the Sunnyvale Library. Kate Three Sisters Band will be your entertainment. That's a local Sunnyvale group, well-known at this point. You may have seen them on Good Morning America a couple of weeks ago. Admission in advance is $15, purchase at the library, or $20 at the building. All proceeds, including those of T-shirt, CD sets, go to the library. And this is a grant for the Kate Three Sisters, so they're doing it at no cost to us. So I look forward to seeing all of you there Saturday night. Students, by the way, is free. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The additional announcements.
Mayor, I just wanted to do a quick compliment to the chief and to staff for their efforts in getting the fire sirens, warning sirens, working better. For the time that I've lived in the town, I rarely hear the sirens, particularly if the doors are closed and windows closed, and my house is poorly constructed in that regard. So I can hear just about anything that happens outside, but I have not been able to hear the sirens. This last test that was done for earlier in the month, it was quiet, it was almost scared to the fact that I thought, for somebody as old as I am, I probably might be in a war. I mean, it didn't earth-shatter your ears, but you could hear it. And I'm kind of down in the lower area compared to where the siren is. Sirens gotta go up, you'll be down, you'll be able to hear it. I just want to thank staff for that effort, and I'm sure other people in the town who can better hear now, their tighter homes, are probably quite appreciative as well.
Good to see you again. These were complicated. Staff?
Yes, sir. Couple of things. One, just a reminder to mark your calendars for Thanksgiving morning at 7:30 for the Turkey Trot. It should be a really good time, and something easy and quick, so there is online registration, so make sure you do that. We have postings on our social media page and elsewhere of how to register to participate in the Turkey Trot. Also, December 6th is our Christmas Extravaganza, including the Christmas tree lighting and a lot of expanded activities here in town halls, so we hope everyone will join us for that. And then the final thing is, you know, we did have the pretty significant storm the other night, and so we want to make sure we're reminding everybody to go on the town website and sign up for our emergency notification messages, because they are called outdoor warning sirens for a reason. They're to warn you when you're outdoors. So I'm glad that you can hear them inside, but really, they're not intended to hear inside. That's why it's so important to register, so that you get the phone call or the text message in the event that we see something that we need to notify about. So you can go online, and it's townofsunnyvale.org/communications, and there's a place there to register for different items of communication from the town, and that's one of them.
The addition of staff announcements.
Mayor, Susan, do you have any update on November 11th Veterans Day activity?
Yes, I know that the school is having an event, but as well, we're going to be recognizing veterans here in the council meeting that evening, particularly those who are employees of the town or who serve on boards and commissions, and we'll have a brief program and some recognition. So anyone who would like to come join us for that and just be able to salute our veterans, it's gonna be a great event.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Are there additional staff announcements? Okay. If not, moving on to the public forum. This is the time, citizens may come and address the council on any matter, except items on the agenda and public hearing that are included on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to the council on items related to the agenda, I ask you to go fill up one of these forms. These forms are placed right outside the door, and turn it into Town Secretary's Ritter Agency. This way, we can give back off the address and the topic and your position. We request that you limit your comments to three minutes maximum per topic. With that, if anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. Nowhere is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public forum. Council, we have one item on the consent agenda, that is to discuss and consider and act upon Resolution 19-42, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing the town manager to execute the sale, trade, donation, or disposal of said property. Council, anyone like to discuss this item? If there are no discussions or comments on this item, can I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 1 as presented?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 1.
As presented?
As presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve Consent Agenda Item 1 as presented.
Mayor, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Allen. Have you heard the motion? Are there any questions or discussions? All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0, Mr. Clark is absent. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Item number two, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon a request by the Town of Sunnyvale for the second reading of Ordinance 19-27, an ordinance amending the Town Unified Development Ordinance, duly passed by the Town Council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend Section 3.03 zoning districts, specifically Section 3.0316.h, minimum size as well as any other associated section. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, Council, as you know, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This is proposed to help facilitate easier development with regard to displacement of planet owners, to allow for consideration for smaller acres, something less than 10 acres. At the first reading, council requested pre-approval of language to be added that would require a resolution by council prior to submittal of any plan in motion that would be less than 10 acres. The language has been added to the ordinance for your review.
Mr. Jackson, you think the language we added will suffice the need or concern sufficiently address the concerns of the applicants?
I do.
Okay. So I'm going to take public comments at this time. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, please do so at this time. Nowhere is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Rocha?
Rocha, just a procedural question, so I understand how this would work. If someone wanted to proceed with this, they would have to come to you, present the plan, then you would present it to council, we would have to approve it by resolution. Just correct me anytime if I'm wrong. And then it would go to P&amp;Z after that, and then back to council?
Well, this would be a requirement for even just to submit it, so.
Or even just to submit it, it has to come to council, and we have to give a resolution, then it goes, so before you even see it, we have to approve it?
Right. What would happen is, you know, we require a pre-application reading in Ottawa, so if I have a applicant who wants to do something like this, we would have a general review meeting, they present it to staff, and then I would explain that they will need to get pre-approval from Town Council before they submit. Then it would be put on the schedule for review by staff, and then P&amp;Z, and then council.
So at that time, they may not have all the details, right? This is just maybe a summary approach, is that what they will be presenting to council, or will be?
Right. We were trying to get, you know, the most information we could, but this may be just a general sketch plan that they have. I wouldn't want them to.
Invest in us. Is that your concern, Mr. Finch?
No, it just seems like we're getting away in weeds real quick in the process. I mean, it's a long process, and we're inserting ourselves at the very beginning before it's ever seen, and I'm not sure about the intent of that. I mean, I would just look for staff to guide us on that, because it seems like we're inserting ourselves really early into a process. And I know you're just responding to what council said, I got it.
Right.
But I'm questioning that at this point from this body to say, do we really want to be in the weeds that quick on a, on a, something like this? Because you're gonna have, the way I see it, is we're gonna have ultimate approval authority as it goes through the process, you, as it goes through P&amp;Z, and then it finally comes to us.
Right.
At the end of the process, right?
Correct.
And I know we had some discussion about this before, Mayor, but it just seems like to me that we're really muddling down, we're not being real friendly here to somebody who wants to do this.
So I believe the intent of this was to be more friendly, so that someone doesn't go through the entire PD process?
Okay.
And spend, you know, zoning cases you can spend 30,000 to 60,000 dollars on?
So you see this as being more friendly, not longer than the process?
Because it lets them know upfront whether the project that they're contemplating satisfies what the council sees is something that would warrant a PD for less than 10 acres.
Okay. It just seems counterintuitive to me, but I see your point.
Well, and there's no notice required, there's not any of the statutory requirements for this action that there are for a zoning case.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the part.
Mr. Jackson? Any questions? Council, are there additional discussions on this topic? Okay. This is the second reading, so there are no other discussions. Can I have a motion to approve, or to approve or deny, item number two?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Agenda Item 2 as presented and discussed.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve Agenda Item 2 as presented, is the second.
Mayor, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Allen to approve Item 2. Have you heard the motion? The initial discussion on this topic? All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0. Moving on to the item number three, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon a request by the Town of Sunnyvale for the second reading of Ordinance 19-28, an ordinance amending the Town Unified Development Ordinance, duly passed by the Town Council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend Section 3.05 zoning dimensional regulations, specifically Section 3.05 or 4, non-procedential and special zoning district dimensional regulations chart, as well as any other associated sections. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, Council, as much as this is the second reading of this ordinance, previous reading, Council, if you have any additional comments to what's in the legislation on the reason for the request, staff noted that the existing square footage or acreage required that we have for enough of retail has been a hindrance to the development. The majority of the retailers and users, they only use about half of what we require, so it leaves very little property that would be unused. This is a way to resolve that, allow the building to justify the design, and it should for most, create a better opportunity for them to develop.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm gonna have to take public comments at this time, if anyone would like to come forward, speak to the council on this topic, please come forward. Nowhere is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Jackson? Mr. Freeman?
The only question I have is, this is for new construction only, correct? So someone couldn't go back and retroactively apply this to something that's maybe already been developed?
No.
Meaning, like, if they wanted to, you know, buy something that was already developed, you know, and basically go through a redevelopment? Is this just for new constructions?
This is for new construction, and if somebody wanted to redevelop, they would be redeveloping according to these new regulations. So for more.
Can I ask your question, Mr. Freeman?
You did. Thank you.
Are there additional questions or discussion on this topic? Okay, there are no additional discussions. Can I have a motion to, with respect to item number three?
Mayor, make a motion to approve Agenda Item 3 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve Agenda Item 3 as presented, is the second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Freeman. Have you heard the motion? The initial discussion. All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0. Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Moving on to the Section H, that is the Discussion and Action Items portion of the agenda. Item number four, discuss, consider, and act upon Resolution 19-41, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, recognizing the importance of municipal court, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administrative justice, and declaring number 438, 2019, as municipal court week in the Town of Sunnyvale. So I think, Rachel, you said I read the.
The resolution.
Recognition case. So let me read the Resolution 19-41. In recognition of Municipal Court Week, number 438, 2019, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administrative justice, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas the Town of Sunnyvale has hosted the Sunnyvale Municipal Court for nearly three decades. Whereas the state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Sunnyvale Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures of the Sunnyvale Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Court of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state, the state of Texas. Whereas the Town of Sunnyvale is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Sunnyvale municipal judges are not policy makers for the Town of Sunnyvale, but are bound by the law and the canon of judicial conduct, and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the Town Council, town officials, and the employees. Whereas the Town Council recognized that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Sunnyvale Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, that the week of number 438, 2019, is hereby recognized as municipal court week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered for citizens by the Municipal Court of Sunnyvale, passed and approved on this, the 28th day of October, 2019, signed by Mayor Sajid George, attested by Rachel Ramsey, Town Secretary. Council, that's the resolution, so I'm going to take public comments at this time. If anyone from the audience of the, from the chamber would like to come forward, and make comments, please come forward. Nowhere is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or comments on Resolution 19-4? If not, can I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-41 as presented?
Mayor, make a motion to approve Agenda Item 4, which is Resolution 19-41, as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve Resolution 19-41 as presented, is the second.
Mayor, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Allen. Have you heard the motion? All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0. So, Council, with that, council and management want to recognize court personnel. We appreciate all of the Sunnyvale Municipal Court staff for the dedication to the Sunnyvale Municipal Court. These individuals are part of a larger group of who comprise, who comprise Texas municipal courts. Municipal Courts Week is a great time to not only recognize how much municipal courts do, but to share with the public the important role that local courts and their personnel play in the criminal justice system and the larger community. Tonight, we have Prosecutor Erica Madden. Erica, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Prosecutor Ward McCord.
Mr. McCord.
And Deputy Crown. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Not present our Court Clerk, Liliana Moreno, and Judge Catherine Heavard. Again, we thank you for your dedication and service to Sunnyvale Municipal Court, and with that, I present to you Resolution Number 19-41, declaring number 438, 2019, as municipal court week in the Town of Sunnyvale. Thank you very much.
Mayor, this is the problem when you ask the person who is in charge of court to do the list to recognize people, but conspicuously missing off that list is Court Administrator Rachel Ramsey as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey, for what you do. She just won us special.
Can we take a picture with you? Can we take a picture with you?
Yes, ma'am. You know who Jermaine is, right?
I'll get a picture. I'll be fine.
You're taking the resolution with me or not?
Yeah.
I'll put some pictures.
Take a picture.
Take your picture.
Almost.
Thank you, guys. Please, for, if you like. Take your picture.
Okay, moving on to item number five, discuss and consider and act upon appointing candidates so as members of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Council, we have one opening for an alternate position. Do you have recommendation for the council?
Mayor, pursuant to our previous open meeting where we discussed this, I make a motion to appoint Charles Troy Childers as alternate to the planning and zoning commission.
Motion made by Ms. Yiget, seconded by Mr. Finch, to approve Troy Childers as the second alternate to the planning and zoning commission. Rachel, is that, how long is the term again? Is that a two-year term?
Yes, because her appointment was up, correct?
Third, we turn this one.
Yes, two years.
For a two-year term starting 2019. Have you heard the motion? All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0. Thank you, Councilwoman Rachel. Moving on to item number six, discuss and consider and act upon clarifying which member is appointed to the Board of Adjustments, is filling a full two-year term, and which member is filling the unexpired term of one year. Council, we appointed Mr. Demko and Joe Turner last time, but I think we failed to identify who will be filling the two-year and who will be filling the one-year. Council, do you have recommendation?
Mayor, I make a recommendation that we appoint Ken Demko to the two-year term and Joe Turner to the one-year term for the Board of Adjustments.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to appoint Ken Demko for a two-year term starting 2019, and Mr. Joe Turner for a one-year term. Is that right?
Correct.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, is the second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Freeman. All heard, everyone heard the motion? All are verified, or opposed, motion passed, 6-0. Going to take public comments on you on this one?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, you need to take a proper.
Okay, got it. All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Do you want to take public comments on this one?
Mayor, you need to take a proper
Okay, got it. Item number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon appointing a member of the Board of Adjustments to serve as the chairperson and alternate chairperson. Council, we have a Board of Adjustment by the Charter. You're required to appoint a chairperson, alternate chairperson. Before I get your comments, I'm going to ask for public comments if I need. No one coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, do we have a recommendation for a chairperson and an alternate chairperson?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Karen Hill as the chairperson and Lyndon James as the co-chairperson or
Alternate.
Alternate chairperson.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Finch to reappoint Karen Hill as the chairperson and Lyndon James as alternate chairperson. I made a slight change, is that okay with you, Mr. Freeman? So, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor of signifying? All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Moving on to item number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon the appointment of members of the Court Enforcement Focus Group. Ms. Susan, I think we should at least explain that. Staff should explain what the whole thing is all about.
So, if you recall, we did a citizen survey many months ago, and one of the actions, action items from that survey was to drill down a little bit on what the responses regarding code enforcement were about. The satisfaction rating was lower than many of our other areas, but we didn't know if it was lower because people wanted more code enforcement or less. So, we had agreed that we formed this after some of our other special committees had terminated. We would appoint a group to just temporarily look at this and give feedback to the staff about what they'd like to see for code enforcement. So, again, it's a temporary committee. I think we said we would meet between October and January once monthly to get feedback to the staff.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. So, I'm going to open up the public comments section. If anyone from the audience would like to come and speak about this appointment, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, just to make a slight change, we have in your application, we have Mr. Sidney Bonoski, Shirley Bellows, Jack Kerplent, Jim Pop, Jimmy Brewer, Regid Murlethern, Georgie Orgies, Caden Turner, and I believe Mr. Stephen Frye also has attended the application. Did I get their addresses correct?
Yes.
So, so we have nine people applying for this one. Council, any concerns about appointing every one of them to the Citizens Committee? Okay. Additional discussions on this topic?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Have we given this group a task? And I'm just trying to lay cards out on the table for what are they to be focusing on? Are they supposed to be focusing on things that could be done that improve the optics, one's optics as they drive through the town? Or is it things that make sure that they put three nails in a two-by-four when they build a house?
So, I think staff as part of the the launching of this Citizens Committee has developed a charter, and I think charter is, I can read to the charter if you, there's one of the links here is. Colin, Susan, you have, Ms. Catherine, the other handy with you?
Yes, sir. It says the Code Compliance Focus Group is a temporary group assembled to participate in a guided discussion as a result of feedback received from the citizen survey with the purpose of clarifying the meaning of the results while keeping our town safe, clean, and pleasant to live in or visit. And again, appointments approved in September with meetings once a month between October and January with the objectives being provide an effective value of goals, develop priorities for our objectives, bring clarity and greater unification between the town staff and citizens, inform residents, business owners, developers, and builders of a needed voluntary compliance of town codes and ordinances. So, you know, some of that will be clarified. You know, right now, a lot of our code enforcement is on complaint basis, but we do do proactive enforcement as well. So, some discussion of that also about are there codes that people don't understand or know about? What ones do we need to really get out there and educate more about? So, I think it's kind of a holistic discussion, but mostly it is listening, what did those results on the survey mean?
I think if you look at this next page, states obviously they meet monthly, right? From October to January and prioritize based on community desires and needs, so. And I'm assuming they'll come back to the council eventually for approval?
Yes, sir.
And actually, of course, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think it was important that we got that into the public. You know, if you don't, everybody's lives are busy and if they don't have the time to sit down and read through this document, I think it's important that the reading that Town Manager just did was important for those who get an opportunity to see the stream now or watch it later, that they know specifically what's going on.
Yeah, the big picture is defined. Good point, good point. Council, are there additional discussions on this topic? If not, can I add a motion with respect to item number eight?
Mayor, I make a motion, item number eight, that we appoint all members that you named on that list. Additionally, in the minutes, Scott Clary is not listed in here.
Stephen Clary.
Stephen.
I'm sorry, Stephen Clary is not listed in this, and so the motion would be that we add him on there as well.
Stephen Clary has done the application here, as we have it. Council, there's a motion made by Mr. Allen to approve item number eight, appointing every, all members listed, plus Stephen Clary to the Court Enforcement Focus Group. So, a second.
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor of signifying? All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Moving on to item number nine, I just to discuss, consider, and act upon the appointment of members to the Census Committee. Council, we have three applicants, two are listed, Hannah Das and Regid Murlethern, plus we have a late application from Ebeli White. I think she is part of the school, SIST, so will be a very good addition to the Census Committee. So, Mr., for the council, if there are questions, the Town House defined, the staff has defined a scope, charter similar to the Compliance of the Court Enhancement Committee, so that is also available for the I'm going to open up for public comments, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there additional discussions or any questions or discussions on item number nine? If there are none, can I have a motion to approve item number nine with appointing three members, as presented?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve motion number nine with the names that you mentioned for the Census Community Committee.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to appoint the Census Committee members, as presented, with the three people listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Everyone heard the motion? Additional discussions? All in favor of signifying? All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Thank you, staff, this was a lot of work and hopefully between staff and the committee, this will produce good results. Moving on to item number ten, consider and act upon all matters incidented on related to approving and authorizing publication notice, notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of resolutions pertaining thereto. That be Ms. Hopkins or that be Ms. Catherine?
It's going to be a tag team. So, Mayor and Council, as you recall, in February of this year, you all appointed the CIP Citizens Committee, and the committee met for quite some time and reviewed an entire list of needed capital improvement projects for the town. They ultimately came back and made recommendations about what they felt the priorities were moving forward. On June 24th, you all approved their plan and adopted it, and then that carried forth into the annual budget, so it was, I think, I was trying to remember the total number of times Liz, probably at least 10 times reviewed as we went through the budget process. So, none of this should be new to you, but we're available for questions. We have attached each of the projects that are going to be covered in this issuance. And as you know, this is just the first step and several steps that we'll go through. But the total amount to not to exceed is $6.550 million, and if you notice, if you do the math, it doesn't quite equal that, but because of some variances, we wanted to make sure we had enough money identified upfront. We do have Eric here today, if you have questions of him, but in here, you do see the notice of the intention, Exhibit A, the schedule of everything that we're going to need to do to get to this issuance, as well as the CIP project descriptions for each item, including Collins Road Phase Two Engineering. And that's an important project because we have applied for a grant to, for construction of that. This will strengthen our brand if we have this project shovel-ready. And it includes East Trip Road Downstream, the culvert, which we discussed in our last meeting, the importance of doing that project, the trip road drainage improvements east of Collins, the east trip drainage improvement at Sunnyvale Estates, the Jobson Road wetlands bypass, and the Barnes Bridge project of stabilizing the banks of the bridge so that we can get that reopened. And again, for a total of $6.17 million, but again, the resolution's for a higher amount. Again, Liz is here, she can talk to any details that you have, and Eric is here from a financing standpoint as well. We're happy to take any questions, sir.
Thank you. So, I'm going to take public comments at this time. If there are any comments from the public with respect to item number 10, please come forward. If there are none, I'm going to close the public forum. Council, are there any questions for any of the staff or the board council? Mr. Freeman?
Can we get a, can I again get an explanation on D4? Exactly what, where that is?
B4?
B4. Yes, sir. Just go over this just very briefly. Trip Road, where it borders the Sunnyvale Estates residential development, there, that is currently an open channel. It is, the drainage along there is rather poor. When you drive by there after any kind of rain event of any significance, water is standing in the street approaches off of Trip Road as you enter that subdivision and within the ditches themselves. Essentially, the intent here is to just rehabilitate that area, reconstruct the street approaches as needed based in order to provide positive drainage so that we don't have that standing water after a rain event, which obviously is a hazard to the public traverse in those areas.
So, basically, Manor Way to, let's say, Harris.
Manor Way to Harris would be the primary part of it, but there would be other improvements as needed, really all the way to Jobson, just as own as-needed basis.
Are there additional questions? Just there for a second, Ms. Jenkins. Additional questions with the town engineer?
Well, thank you, Law. You referenced it includes Manor Way, but this box does not appear to include Manor Way.
I beg your pardon, which?
I think you talked about the D4.
I'm sorry, the D4?
Picture, right?
You were reading the trip, the drainage road on Trip that's supposed to go from 4A, and I apologize, I didn't catch that, but the second was the Manor Way, having the red box on this paper doesn't appear to include Manor Way.
And that, that's my fault. When I, when I put this exhibit together, so that was a tie-bone my part, and I apologize for that, but it is intended to include everything along that front.
Okay.
And again, any drafting errors are solely my fault.
Okay, I just want to be clarified.
Sure.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Possibly all the way to Jobson.
If needed, yes.
So, if needed, so how do you design this one?
Once, once this project moves forward, the first thing is going to be do certain, is to be do survey of the area so we can see what the grades actually are, the actual elevations, and that will enable us to develop a scope of exactly how far we need to take this in order to get this thing to work.
So, money could be less than $843. So, this is a worst-case example?
I would say this is a worst-case example, sir, that possibility does exist, but we'll just have to see for sure once the survey is done.
Okay, thanks. There are additional questions for the town engineer?
Right.
Thank you. And there are additional questions for any other staff, board council, Ms. Hopkins, Ms. Catherine, anybody? Okay, are there additional discussions on this topic? So, Ms. Catherine, let me ask you, do we need, when you make the motion, can we just say to approve item number 10 or do we need to specify the amount?
You can simply approve item number 10, as presented.
Council, can I have a motion with respect to item number 10?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve item number 10 on the agenda that's presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve item number 10, as presented, so second.
A second, Mayor.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions on this topic? All in favor of signifying? All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Thank you very much, staff. Moving on to item 11. Discuss, consider, and act upon Resolution 19-40, the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between the Town of Sunnyvale and the City of Mesquite for funding participation in the public dispatch service system. That be, Ms. Black?
Mayor, Council, if you'll remember, over a year ago, we budgeted to fund the potential of moving to the City of Mesquite for dispatch services. It was originally going to require an EMS facility, and then we would look at including our police services to meet a police department. As you know, that timeline had moved up over the past year. So, we have been working with the City of Mesquite and their staff to look at this possibility. They have requested this study to see what exactly it will take from a software, hardware, and compatibility standpoint. So, they went out for an RFP, we received three bids, we did a committee to look at all of the proposals, and the committee has recommended going with Black and Beach. They're a well-known communications provider for public safety departments. And this is in our local agreement, and we stipulate that we would repay the City of Mesquite for the costs related to these services. So, we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Black. So, I'm going to open up the public comments, if there are anyone who would like to come and comment on this topic, you may please do so. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comment. Council, are there additional discussions or questions for staff?
Clarification. This is to study needs or the feasibility of doing it?
Study of needs, not feasibility.
Thank you.
There are additional questions or discussions on this topic? Okay, if there are none, can I have a motion to approve item number 11, as presented?
Mayor, make a motion to approve item number 11, as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number 11, as presented, so second.
A second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor of signifying? All opposed? Motion passed. Six zero. Moving on to item number 12, discuss, consider, and act upon Resolution 19-44, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale reaffirming and approving guidelines and criteria for tax abatement agreements and providing effective aid. I think it's complete, Ms. Catherine? Yes, you can?
Yes, sir. When you were saying from Tracy, this was kind of her last action before walking out the door, was to remind us that this needed to be done, I believe, as on a two-year, every two-year schedule. So, these are the provisions that we've had in the past. We didn't make any changes, but it is a formality that we need to make sure that we reaffirm these.
At this time, I take the, anything else, Ms. Catherine? That's all right. Going to take public comments, if anyone would like to come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public comments. Uh, council, are there any questions for Ms. Gattler? If there are none, can I have a motion with respect to item number twelve?
Mister Mayor, can we approve, um, I make a motion to approve item number twelve as presented?
Motion made by Mister Freeman to approve agenda item twelve as presented, is there a second? Okay. Second by Mister Finch. Everyone heard the motion, the additional discussions? All in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number thirty, discuss, consider, and act upon awarding a contract between the Town of Sunnyvale and Concord Commercial Services Incorporated for security updates within Town Hall. That will be, Rapsi?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Mayor and council, as you all know, staff went out for an RFP regarding security updates to the Town Hall Customer Service Area. Uh, one proposal was received from Concord Commercial Services, Inc., and staff is recommending that we award the contract to Concord Commercial Services. The total cost of the project is one hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. A hundred and forty thousand of that would be paid for by court security funds, and fifty-two thousand of that paid for by capital assets within the utility fund. Staff is happy to answer any questions.
So, this way, I'm saying the plan is to get, uh, discuss item number thirteen, and the council approves it, then move on to item number fourteen for the charter, so the first reading and then come back, maybe consider it as a second, is that the general direction?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if there are anybody from the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council on item thirty, uh, please do so at this time. Counsel, are there any questions for staff on item number thirty? If there are none, can I have a motion with respect to item number thirty?
May I make a motion to approve item thirteen as presented?
Motion made by Mister Finch to approve agenda item thirty as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Allen. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If not, all in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number fourteen. Discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance nineteen dash thirty-one, and ordinance amending ordinance nineteen twenty, which made appropriations for the support of the Town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty nineteen, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty, and amending the annual budget of the Town of Sunnyvale for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, special revenue fund and utility fund. That will be Ms. Hartman?
And, yes, council, when we got the bid for the improvements to the security at the, the front counter there, we were looking for funding sources because the security fund that's, uh, collected through citations was just unfortunate, it was one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and after reviewing the fact that the utility billing function is also, uh, a, a front desk security concern, we felt it was appropriate that the utility fund could participate in funding these upgrades, and for that reason, uh, those were not budgeted when we approved the original budget back in September. So, we're coming before you now to amend the special revenue fund, the full fund balance, which we've been collecting for many years and not used because it's extremely restricted. These are the types of improvements that that fund was, was designed for, and then for the utility fund, you have the difference, because again, that front desk encompasses both the court and the utility billing function. And I put those of the, the budgets there with the, with the amendments highlighted.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Let me get the, okay. If there are citizens comments, you can ask questions about also. So, if there are anyone from the audience who'd like to come forward and comment on this topic, can I please come forward? Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public comments. Mister Finch?
So, just to clarify, Liz, maybe my misunderstanding, I heard you say utility fund, and I thought this was coming out of, maybe it's called the same thing, the police, the, the court fund, Rachel, what's it called?
So, a hundred and forty thousand of it is coming out of the court security fund. The remaining fifty-two thousand is coming out of the capital assets fund within the utility fund.
Within the utility, okay, that's where I lost, okay, I was, it's totally on me, trust me.
Correct, there's, there's two funds here, there's what we call the special revenue, which encompasses the work of court security, court technology, um, child safety seats, all that, that stuff, and then your utility fund, which is your water and sewer revenue fund.
Okay. Not just that a general fund is coming from that?
The general fund is not involved in this particular development.
Mister Allen, you have a question, sir?
Ms. Answer.
Okay. Is there any other comment or something?
You got the resolution and the amendments here for you.
Okay. Do I need to use this resolution, or can just approve, we can ask for a motion with respect to item number fourteen? Okay, council, are there any additional discussions? If not, can I have a motion with respect to item number fourteen? This is the first reading, so we'll be back on the second, next council meeting, so motion, please.
May I make a motion to approve item number fourteen as presented?
Motion made by Mister Allen to approve item number fourteen as presented, is there a second? Second. Second by Mister Finch. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions or comments? If not, all in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number fifteen. Receive status updates regarding the timeline and implementation of the police department. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, council. I'm just gonna give you a brief synopsis of the, what we're working on, what we've got done, uh, that was the last time y'all met. A big, uh, item, of course, is we did get our T-Cole application submitted to the state. Lieutenant Gary Cannella has, um, contacted me, and he has received it, uh, and he's beginning to work on it this week. They were in their, uh, annual conference down in Corpus last week, so that was, uh, why the delay in the response was. Uh, at that point, it's, the, the T-Cole process isn't like a pass/fail thing, it's, it's, they're here to give us our license, we just gotta do what they say to get it. So, he's reviewing it, if he's got questions, he'll contact me, uh, to clarify some things. Uh, once they get done with the review, they'll, they'll actually show up here and, and check out the things, like, do we have the signage out there, do we have an evidence locker or room in place and that, and that type of things, and if, if there's something that we don't have, they'll tell us, we need to get this, and, and then the licenses. Usually, there's, there's no timeline, it's kind of a waiting game on when they're ready, but after they get done with everything, it'll be about four to six weeks from what other chiefs have told me.
So, after their visit, it'll take four to six weeks?
Yes. Uh, we're, we're in the process of, of working on the renovations, uh, we've got kind of two renovations going on, or planned, one is the, the big overhaul of the building to make it a functional police department. I met with a general contractor this week, or last week, and kind of showed him the outline of where we need things and what the functionality of the building needs to be, so they're gonna be putting together some type of, uh, estimate so that we can put that forth to a bid process later on. Short-term renovations, uh, we're basically turning the large conference room in the center of the building into the operating police department, so that the sheriff's office can continue to operate there as well. Uh, we've got a carpet, uh, installation coming, uh, we've just gotta decide on the, on the carpet square colors, and, uh, that should be done this week, and then it takes them about five days to order the carpet from Georgia, so I'm looking, probably two weeks from today, hopefully, they'll start that installation process.
Counsel, are there discussion on the carpet?
No, just asking.
We've got our evidence, uh, locker bolted down to the floor and, and the, and certain other procedures we need for evidence, so I'm really hoping to get this carpet in before T-Cole shows up. If it's not, it's, it's not a big deal, we might put it finished, so that's what we're working on there. Uh, equipment, we ordered our, our firearms for all our officers, uh, we took bids on that, or some quotes, and went with the lowest quote, um, so we're looking forward to getting that. We'll still have to purchase our rifles sometime this next year, but our sidearms will be here and ready to be issued out as we hire, uh, officers. Duty gear's coming in, I, I've ordered one rig for me, um, to see if everything's gonna work and function well, if, if I don't like the way it looks, we'll send it back and we'll try something different. Uh, working on a taser lease right now, uh, usually those are five-year leases from Axon, who, who makes tasers, uh, those supplies with so many cartridges, and our tasers are, are guaranteed, 'cause they, sometimes they do break, and we can send it back to them, they'll send us a new one. Uh, so we should be getting that price this week, um, we'll get some, we've got some vest prices, uh, working, working with the Dicky's Foundation, who will help us purchase vests if we run low on funds, uh, their goal is to not have any officers without the ability to buy and purchase vests to wear, so I don't know if we'll need them, but I've had a meeting with them too, and they're, they're real, uh, helpful in that area. Uh, and then we're working on our body-worn cameras and our digital storage leases and get some prices, and working with town manager on, on some of these civilian positions, like the IT position, that we may need to have some input from the, that person down the road on, on some of this stuff. As far as digital storage, a lot of that comes up that we wanna pay to have digital storage onsite or the cloud, and that's usually the big issue, cost comparison. Uh, we're working on vehicles now, I've got prices on some Dodge Chargers through Byboard, and I'm waiting on a quote for Ford Explorers from a Ford dealership, and I can't remember the name of it, I think it's Chance Ford, who is also on Byboard, and they're gonna give me a full, uh, fully equipped price on the Explorer. I sent them, um, some specs on, on what we need to outfit our cars as far as lights and rifle racks and radios and cages and that sort of thing, so.
Is our chief, is our standard, specific industry, specific best price?
Yeah, there's little quirks here and there, you know, how many red and blues you want on your bumper, and you want them coming out of your strobes, coming out of your taillights, and, and, you know, you can put as many lights on a car as, as you can possibly fit, uh, but, yeah, I sent them our spec sheet that I had from my previous employment, um, it's a, it's a good combination of, uh, it's not too many lights, but there's enough where people see you, and the officer doesn't get ran up, or is our main, um, intention there. So, we should be getting those Ford Explorer quotes, um, probably tomorrow, I, I've been in talks with them all day today, so. We're working on our pay scales, um, so that we can remain competitive when we do begin to hire, and, uh, get those worked at, worked down, and so we can present those to you. Um, we're, we're, we're using some comparable cities' pay scales from their law enforcement, uh, pay scales, um, and they vary, you know, from one to ten-year step plans and all that, so we'll, we'll put that together for you now. And I'm working on the recruitment strategy, um, I had a, a webinar with a, a company called Interview Now, and what they do is you advertise, um, become a Sunnyvale police officer, text one, two, three, four to this number, and when they text that, then it engages them in a conversation, it pre-qualifies them, and then they send us the information on these candidates, um, so, and actually, I, I read, I found out about that this weekend when I was reading an article, and it said Sunnyvale, California is using it. Thought that was interesting.
So, we started the recruitment of the police officers, or we have, have you started the recruitment of the police officers?
No. The plan is, of course, everything is, is, um, being held up by the T-Cole application, we have to be on paper a police department before we start hiring. Uh, but my goal is to recruit and hire the four sergeants first, so that they, in the rest of the remainder of this year until October of twenty twenty, they can start working on some of these assignments with me, I'm gonna delegate some of these specific, uh, assignments to the sergeants, and so that we can get it done. And that's, that's pretty much it right now, I'm staying plenty busy, and, uh, as I get T-Cole updates, I'll let town manager know so that she can share with you.
So, a lot of things are moving fast, thank you so much for being here, I'm doing what you do. Counsel, any question for, uh, chief? Thank you very much, sir. So, Susan, that is more of an update than anything else, right? There's no action item on this one, right?
Yeah, no action either, we're still committed to doing that each council meeting, so that you and the community would know where we're at with implementation.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the executive session, uh, counsel, can I have a motion to recess into executive session, for certainly chapter five fifty-one, chapter D of the federal joining code, we have one item, personal, uh, five fifty-one point also in four, personal matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty is discipline or dispassion of a public officer or employee, town manager will be...
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recess into executive session.
Made by Mister Freeman, who, which is next, two, second, second by Mister Finch. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed six zero. Now, time is six, eight or six, we have an executive session. Thank you.
That's the office here, so I wasn't wrong.
Okay, now, time is eight twenty-two, this time we are going to reconvene into the, what? Did I miss something?
You did, but it's okay.
What's that? We're gonna reconvene to the regular Town Council meeting, uh, for tonight, uh, I can confirm as a result of the executive session, no action is to be taken, so with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the regular session for October twenty, can I motion? Motion made by Mister Finch to adjourn for the second.
Second.
Second by Mister Freeman to adjourn the regular session for October twenty. Thank you very much, now, time is taken, please, meetings adjourned, tonight.